Thank you, Mayor, Council. Kind of keeping with the airport theme earlier. Trying to land this plane and we're running out of runway. And so as a...
I like it.
I like it.
As kind of a quick recap of what we've done Thursday night, we had a real informative presentation to the council about what it would take to get a referendum on the November ballot. We talked about on May the 9th, the bond council would need to prepare a preliminary resolution and approval for the city to apply to the LGC, the Local Government Commission. And within that preliminary resolution would be the number of questions, basically, and the not to exceed amount. And now remembering that if the not to exceed amount is, let's say, 200 million, you could come down from that as time went on. I believe it's until late August, early September. And the number of questions could go down as well. So let's say you started with four or five questions on the 9th, you could go down to two or three. And then after that meeting, or during that meeting, there was some requests for information. Staff sent that out the next morning, or I think maybe next afternoon. And so here we are. And what you have at your... I have the whole deck from Thursday ready. But really, what I wanted to start with, and this is what you have in front of you, and this is kind of basically what the framework would look like, except we wouldn't have amounts. We would just focus on the top end. So what I heard was public safety, infrastructure, and housing. And then you can see the proposed ranges there. If you look at the 50 million, you know, you're looking at the emergency call center, maybe a fire station, maybe some improvements. And also, too, let me add this. The whole ask last time was around 111 million, I believe, without the housing. And if that full amount wasn't authorized, staff would still need to come back and prioritize the projects that would fit within the amount that was authorized. So we're still working through that piece as well. So with that, I want to pause and see if there's any questions about the recap or anything else right now.
All right. Thank you. Do have a question from Councilmember Ingram and then Hair.
So this is the only question that I have, and I heard it, I think it came up twice in a different conversation. So some council members have some concerns about swells. In terms of infrastructure, could that be, you know, could that go into being able to assist with that?
Well, the first thing I go to is if, is the city legally able to spend money on that? That would be my first question. And then I would need to get with our city staff to make sure that we can, the city can spend money on it. And then I would need to get with bond council because there's very, there's different questions that you can ask on the ballot. The city can ask on the ballot, and I would need to find the specific one that would fit under. So I would need to answer those two questions first.
So you just said that we will have to ask, do you want your swells cleaned up on the ballot?
No, no, no. So, let's say, let's, I mean, if, let's assume that we can do that. We can spend money to clean up swells, right? And then if the question, then, under each type of question, right, like there's a, if we were just going to build fire stations, it would say on the ballot very specifically and with a little bit of legal ease, fire stations or fire structures or something like that. Same thing with police, same thing with Parks and Recreation. It's a Parks and Recreation facilities to equal 35 million. I would need to clarify what the swells would fall under. Would it fall under infrastructure? Would it fall under some other type of category, official category to go on the ballot?
Okay. So as, if I'm looking at what you have up on the screen right now in terms of a ballot, it will look like this, and under public safety, it will say Fire Stations Emergency Call Center.
It would be more broad than this on the ballot.
Oh, okay.
It would just say, it would say, public safety, structures, facilities, services, things like that. And we can, once we hone in on the, that would be part of the 9th, too, is we would have the sample ballot questions as well.
Okay. Then my next question is, I didn't attend the meeting, but I was in support of it, and I'm gonna support moving it forward. For a campaign like this, not campaign, but for a bond like this, about how much would we need to look at allocating for education?
Well, I talked to, with our corporate communications director, Ms. Phelps, and we had talked about $70,000. We don't know if it would need...
Seven or 70?
70.
Okay.
I don't know that it would need to be an appropriation per se. We would look at their current year budget to see what was in there. And then, of course, this would go into next fiscal year. And then so we would look to probably roll this into their budget for next year as well. And it wouldn't need to be a special appropriation from, you know, taking the first look at it. But we would need to have that money set aside to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hair.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tolan, thank you. We are not prioritizing tonight, correct? Or not?
What we need for the 9th is we need the types or questions, and then a not to exceed amount. So if you don't fund the whole ask, we would, staff would need to come, let's say, public safety. If, you know, the council's appetite is only, or pleasure is only 35 million, staff would need to come back and say, okay, what does that 35 million look like to us? And then, then the conversation would begin. We're not prepared to talk about what, you know, if we can't fund the whole thing, what does staff recommend? We can't, we can't, we're not prepared to have that conversation tonight. But what we do need is a not to exceed amount in the questions to prepare for Monday.
So whenever we, okay, let's just look at, I see the affordable housing. I know we talk about that. And I think at the last meeting, whenever you brought this to us, I was talking about water and sewer infrastructure in the Johnson Street community. I'm just saying, that's what I spoke about then. Is this the Pacific? Is this, are we going to be prioritizing? Because I want to know exactly what the numbers are going to mean and what I'm going to be, what I'm speaking of, if they're going to be in the document. So is it on Monday that you're going to have a much more, because I did hear you say it's going to be a much more detailed, I guess, maybe if it was on the ballot? Can we get a much more detail before Monday? Because I want to know if what I'm asking for are part of this document, what I've been, you know, stomping my feet for?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Well, Jay, one moment. The proposal for infrastructure really is around sidewalks, intersection improvements, bike plan, street repaving, and pavement preservation. I don't know if the things that we have talked about are stormwater or drainage issues. That's not part of the ask for the infrastructure here. The drainage, stormwater issues could be handled under a revenue bond as we continue to do the stormwater master plan and pull those out.
Okay. Well, just help me to understand. I don't want to go anywhere else, but I have been pinpointing the discussion with the rescue funding. I know them somewhere else, I just, let me get it all out. And am I off, am I really that far off on anything on this document for putting in water and sewer in a particular loca, well, at least sewer? I mean, yeah, I can't remember what they have over there. But let's just say water and sewer infrastructure in a particular location. That was been one of my concerns. That's not a, that's not a part of this ask?
No, sir.
No, Councilman Hair. So the stormwater has a revenue source that you could do as a revenue bond. What this is tonight is the authority to borrow up to a certain amount through a general obligation bond.
And I understand that.
Yeah. So no stormwater's in this part.
Okay. All right.
But one of the things, Mayor, that we covered at the last meeting with, that Jay talked about, was that without a funding source or an infusion of cash in the neighborhood that you see on the sheet, there is no ability that we have at the moment to cover any of these expenditures, to do the eight to 10 fire stations, to do the 911 center, to accelerate sidewalks, intersection improvements, fund the bike plan, or even accelerate and keep accelerating the street repaving and pavement preservation, as well as the housing. That there is, within the current structure we have, we don't have that funding. And this is one of the mechanisms that would give us that funding if it was voter-approved to be able to address those issues. The issues that you talked about are other issues that we have, but we do believe if it's stormwater-related, that if council so chooses at the appropriate time, that we do have a funding source for that, but we don't for this.
And if I could just follow up, and thank you, Mayor, for relaxing this so much tonight. So just to follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're gonna tighten it up in a minute.
When it comes to the rescue funding, which I know we're not speaking of, we have not prioritized, we have not done a priority list for that yet. Some...
You mean a specific project? We have identified in the first...
But of course, it was always stated that we were going to put, it was going to go to committees, and within those committees, we were going to deal with...
We're gonna have to bring it back to this right here.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'm just trying to get some money for my...
Yeah, we have to bring it back to this. All right. So Councilman Wright?
Okay. Right now, you're getting asked, do you want to exceed 100 million? 100 million? I don't want to exceed that. That would be my, my, my goal. I want to talk about the infrastructure sidewalks. You're getting 20 to 25 million on that. But I want to go down to housing and the affordable housing and the trust fund. I think 10 million would be good to start a housing trust fund that you can have an impact for years to come. But help me out with the funding for affordable housing projects, single and multifamilies. What do we, what do we want to achieve when you're talking about funding affordable housing projects?
So this is, these are sample uses that we could use the housing bonds from. So here you would, and it really goes back to Mr. Colley's presentation a couple items ago. You could target these funds to help with those developers, those for-profit developers, to build either single-family or multifamily properties to target the affordable income population.
So you would have mixed use in those affordable housing units, those projects. You would have, I'm sorry, those, I guess, housing areas that, a market housing, you would have affordable housing in the market housing?
Well, it depends, I mean, there's a whole different plethora of ways it can be done, but this would be to kind of go towards something that you're referring to.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And so to have an impact, give me an idea of the dollar amount that will impact. Do you have any idea?
I don't know. I think, Mr. Colley still, Chris, do you have anything? 10, I hear 10 on the floor.
Is the question, how much of an impact, how much would you need to make an impact in the housing trust fund?
No, affordable housing projects.
So an individual one. So rather than project, let's, let's call it a development, because project kind of calls to mind that publicly subsidized housing authority kind of thing, right?
Right.
So we're talking about an affordable development here. So it really, really depends on the size and scale of the development and the affordability level of it. A lot of the projects that council is most familiar with are low-income housing tax credit projects, like MacArthur Park is just getting finished, Phase Two up there on MacArthur Road. That one required $400,000 loan from the city at 2% interest, right? So we were able to loan that money out and get some interest earnings off of it after they pay it off in 20 years. But every development's a little bit different. You know, there's developers out there, there's small nonprofits that need heavier subsidies in order to build a 12-unit development. And so some of that might be a 0% interest with a balloon payment at the end of it. So it just changes depending on the development. And so really, what, what the challenge for staff and then ultimately council is, to put those policies and procedures in place, which we're going to look at in June, to say, this is how we would evaluate those developments. And then if I can go just a step further really quick, what this looks like is you have money that's available, you put out a ongoing request for projects, and you say, hey, for-profit, nonprofit, local, non-local developers, if you can figure out how to build something here that is financially viable and includes affordable housing, we can help with the financing in place of and in addition to the bank. That doesn't mean that we will necessarily direct it into a certain place, but we can put some preference on certain areas of the city, like our redevelopment areas, right? But it's all about taking, harnessing the private sector's market, and then making a carve-out and an allowance for affordable housing. That's how we're going to really get those numbers to address that 20,000-unit deficit.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So council, as we look at this, remember, Mr. Tolan, I'll come right to you in a second. Remember, Mr. Tolan said that this is just a maximum amount that you can set, and we can always work our way down?
Yep.
And then you also said that we can add projects, but you can't take away?
Another way.
You can take away, but you can't add?
Right. So let's say, for some reason, you wanted to take away infrastructure, but, and you said, you know, hey, let's do public safety, infrastructure, housing. We set it up that way on the 9th. We get a month down the road, you say, I don't want to do infrastructure, no problem. But then you can't come back and say, hey, I want to add Parks and Rec.
Okay, I understand. All right. So it's not to exceed. So council, I think, in each category, I think, as we, after we answer the questions, maybe we, if we are able to get to a not to exceed consensus, and then I guess, you know, if you want to venture so far as to how we break this down, they've got the minimum and maximum ranges at this proposal, so it could be as low as 77.5, as high as 112. But if you set a cap in the middle or somewhere in between, then the appropriations per, do you need specific appropriations per section tonight, Mr. Tolan?
Uh, yeah, I do.
Okay. All right. All right. So quick question from Councilmember Ingram, then we'll move on to having that discussion. Anywhere in between 77 and 112? Okay. All right. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question. Go to the slide with the public safety. I want to see the delta between 50. I cannot support $30 million for a 911 center. Okay, police department call center, 31 million. Okay, so I'm not going to support that. I, you know, because the county's probably going to end up spending 30 million on their facilities, so, and they've left some room for us if we wanted to go in there, by the way. But I can't do 31 million. So if we take 31 million out of 75, that's 44 million. But we got to have probably 10 or 15 million, so maybe 60 million. That'd give us a $15 million 911. That's probably more than we can really need.
Well, specific projects, they don't need to know, so I guess council...
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah. So we need a consensus for public safety, somewhere between 50 and 75. I'm with them. I don't, I'm not warm and fuzzy on all of that, but we'll have a meeting to kind of work through that. But first of all, council, between 77 and 112, I mean, Mr. Tolan, can you show that the page that shows how much that actually means per taxpayer? So if it was 100 million dollars...
Yeah, so it's about a, I'm sorry. It's about a penny per 25 million.
Sir?
It's about a penny per 25 million.
Right. So, so 4 cent, what is that in money that people understand? On a $200,000 home or 100?
Oh, 4 cents on 200, that'd be $80 a year.
$80 a year. So roughly $6 a month, 6 and 1/2, $6,050 a month.
Additional to the tax they already pay.
Right. Okay. And that would be only if the voters approved this. This is not the council approval, this is just to put it on the ballot for the voters, right?
That's right. And then remember, it wouldn't be this year, it would be the next year, that the increase would go into effect.
Did you repeat that number you stated?
Yeah. So basically, $80 a year if you went with 100 million dollar maximum, and they actually bonded that. So roughly $80 a year, which is about $6.60 a month.
On plus what? On plus?
I don't know. On top of whatever they already pay.
Okay. I thought you were going to tell, I thought you gave us that number, because I asked for that.
200,000. 200?
I asked for that number.
50 cent would be 1,000, your city property tax.
Yeah, that's, you're right. Yeah, so it's close to 1,000. I mean, it's like 990 something.
He seems surprised.
I was more disappointed in myself surprise I didn't...
All right. Councilmember Ingram, you had a question? Okay. All right. All right. So, so council, if you did the not exceeds, I think public safety, we'll just do it section by section. Mr. Tolan, can you go back to that?
Oh, sure.
To the three sections?
60.
So, so between 50, 75, and public safety, between emergency, fire stations and emergency call centers, but certainly looking to collaborate and partner with, but not to exceed, what number did we say here? So if we did 60 there...
25.
Now, let's talk about the infrastructure.
All right.
Sidewalks is a big thing with the public. I know that citizens talk about that a lot. We had a public sidewalks plan that showed us what we needed to be to be more walkable. We funded a lot of that real aggressively, but they were going to get the numbers. But I know we're not talking specifics tonight, but I just want to see, how did you all derive at this 20 to 25? Does that cover these things that are under here?
So the, on the pedestrian, okay, so the 7.3 funds all the sidewalk projects that are in the CIP through fiscal year in '26, plus another 33,000 linear feet, six miles. So that's how they, that's how we came to that 7.3, and then working through the other plans.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Ingram?
Help me understand the logic behind housing coming in lower than infrastructure. Just, just help me understand that.
The logic? So, I mean, I think, you know, looking at 10 million dollars would be something that could really do a good dam, and then you, the city needs to have available projects to fund. And there has to be demand from the marketplace as well. Not necessarily demand from the residents, because we know that's there, but it needs to be demand from the contractors as well. So initially, 10 million dollars would be a good number to kind of satisfy that demand, because then if you do too much, there might not be the demand for it.
There won't be demand for housing?
On the contractor side to build it, not on the resident side. There's plenty of demand there, but then sometimes affordable housing, the demand isn't there on the contractor side.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So, and that could also include the mixed income model that we use, so if someone gets some incentive from the city out of that, Mr. Colley, if they agree to do a certain percentage of their development, seems like that's the bang for the dollars. It's a lot more difficult to do that housing trust, that state model, right, with the low-income tax credits, a lot more restrictions, right?
Right. I mean, there's, there's still state laws that we have to kind of go by with that stuff, but we, typically, those low-income housing tax credit projects are not mixed income. Those are, those are low-income apartment complexes completely. To do the mixed income, we still have to hit those state requirements, but it could have a mix of incomes in it. And then we could do the same thing where we're floating a loan for either a full 20-year period or just through construction. There's, there's lots of different financing for it. To Councilmember Ingram's question, though, 10 million dollars plus what we've already got allocated through American Rescue Funds and the state allocation of 1 million dollars, and the home money and the home ARP money. At some point, you got to start talking about our staff capacity and community capacity and the developer community capacity. And I think we're at the point now where one of our biggest challenges is going to be growing nonprofits that are capable of building housing and using that private sector influence as well to do that. And so really, that's, that's where we're at. And we're talking about 20 million bucks at this point if council were to fund a 10 million dollar housing trust fund. And so that's, that's a lot of movement, of moving that needle in the community.
But that's, that's a long-term situation, because this wouldn't be voted on until the following year, you said, until the following election?
Wouldn't be November.
November.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have the revenues to repay it anyway till that next fiscal year.
And then you have up to seven years to borrow the money, right?
That's right, yeah. You're correct.
So you are talking about a long-term plan. Okay. So as you move to infrastructure, Councilman Dawkins or other council members? I definitely think infrastructure's important. Okay. And then now housing?
Mr. Mayor, can we raise hands on this, please?
Yeah, we're going to raise hands on total package. We're trying to, I'm taking notes for it, but if, we'll see if those proposals pass, because I don't want to go to each dollar amount and ask for a hand raise. Housing? Housing?
12.
Okay. All right. So what I've heard, council, is 60, 25, and 12.
Where did 60 come from? I didn't hear you call it out.
Public safety. That was the first.
No, I didn't hear them call it out. Say 60.
Yeah, that was the first one, but 60.
No. Y'all was discussing that. I didn't hear you call it out to ask.
Well, I'm about to vote on it, so we can take a consensus on each one of these. That's all they were, is proposals. So I'm gonna go down each section. I'll propose the amount that you, I was just repeating what was discussed, and if there's an alternative amount, we can work with that. So public safety, those in favor of 60, show a hand.
I have a question.
Okay. Wait, let me get a count. Hold on, hold on a second. Those in favor of...
Well, I have a question about the number, because it just got thrown out.
Real briefly, yes, ma'am.
Where do we, where do we, how do we get to 60?
Each one of these was a proposal between the minimum and the maximum.
And the max. I get it. Where do we get to 60? Was that the exclusion of the call center?
No, because that still would be more than 60. That was just the maximum amount. We were going to work on the specific projects after we got into it. So we don't know what stays and what goes. This is just the dollar amounts.
Okay.
All right. So a show of hands, those in favor of 60 for public safety? All right. So those oppose? Councilman Hair, which one were you?
I was at 50.
Okay. So, all right. So I think 60 had a consensus there. Infrastructure at 25, those in favor of that? All right. And then those in favor of housing at 12? Show of hands. Okay. All right. So that is a...
97, I think.
So, so the consensus based on that total was 97? At a not to exceed 97? And council, that will be the budget for, and then I guess, will there be a follow-up meeting for us to get specific as to each section and not to exceed those?
Well, we could. I think that Jay has what he needs for Monday, which is to work with bond council to formalize the questions and, I guess, the staging resolution. We do need to come back to council and give you some detailed information on the public safety needs analysis. It's been sometime, some of you may not, may not have been on council, we actually went through and prioritized what was first, second, and third on the list. We also now since then have better data about the cost as well, so that will hopefully inform some of it as well. So chief in chief, we can probably, and Rob Stone, we can plow back through that. But Mayor, I think we have what we need for Monday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question?
Question, yes, sir?
Mr. Tolan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager. How soon, if everything moves forward on Monday, how soon after that do we start marketing with what this is about for the public?
I think very soon. I mean, because we'll need to, I mean...
Because you're expecting this to be on...
November.
November? Okay.
Yeah.
November's ballot.
And sir, we, the last Parks and Rec bond referendum, Rebecca Jackson was participated in kind of the marketing plan for that, and so we pulled back out some of that. and so we pulled back out some of that. Um, also, for public safety, we have, um, some advocacy groups that we would try to make sure we provided information to, and they might would be an advocate for it. But as some of the councilmembers said, we would, um, come back with a request for funding to do a public information campaign, just to give people the facts. But, um, we, um, again, looking for it, the council's action on Monday, we'll probably, won't be much longer after that that we would have a full kind of marketing or communications plan that we could share with you as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tolan. Item four point oh seven, uh, city council, uh, update the meeting procedures and policies. I know this came, uh, to a previous work session, there was consensus, and, uh, it came on as administrative report this, as well as the next two items, uh, which, uh, needed to come back. Mr. Manager, tell us about the procedure for this. It started at a work session, uh, went to administrative reports, now it's back. What did you need?
Um, just, um, nod from council that, um, the, um, policy actually, for some reason, I'm getting an error. Um, just not opening up. Thank you, Pam. That, um, the council is, is supportive of what was drafted. Um, essentially, what it does is when a, a member of council, um, is unable to join us, they would notify the mayor, the manager, or the clerk twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting to, so that we could set up the necessary equipment to accommodate, uh, remote participation. During the call to order, largely, the mayor would announce that the members participating remotely, um, but I think the thing that, um, uh, makes this policy somewhat, um, takes it where the council, I think, was interested in is that, um, we would do all of the coordination for getting the person onboard or online, um, before the meeting or at the very first part of the meeting. Um, and we would need to know, the council would need to know in advance. But other than that, um, uh, clerk or madam attorney, is there anything that, uh, left off significantly here?
Okay. So, uh, council, we've been presented this previous meetings, um-
And Mayor, I'm sorry, I did, looking at the front page again. Um, again, as council has been advised by the city attorney, um, remote participation would not be allowed in quasi-judicial proceedings or closed session, um, as well. So it just, it basically codifies kind of the, um, standing, um, informal policy that we've had since we've been in the COVID posture. There is some discussion, um, long-term, um, that the rules were changed for remote participation, given that we were, um, and because of the global pandemic. But there may be some thought that, um, that may go away now that we're coming out of that. And I don't know if you had more on that, Karen, that you could share.
That's correct. The, uh, General Assembly dropped its, um, uh, actually state law as it related to having, uh, uh, remote meetings and remote participation when there's a state of an emerg- state of emergency. It's not clear at this time, um, when the governor ends the state of emergency, if that, uh, if those statutes, uh, will remain in place. So it could be that, um, the law that allows remote participation may not, um, stay in place once the state of emergency is, um, ended.
Which, of course, it would go back to the statute, which trumps whatever we are doing anyway. Okay. So you'll keep us posted on that?
Yes.
All right. Council, any other questions about this item that we've talked about? All right. Show of hands to move this forward? Sir. All right. Those, uh, those opposed? You say you got a question there? Yeah, my buttons are honestly not popping up. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
Just had a question. Um, no, I'm the new kid on the block, but I just had a question in regards to the flow chart, um, in regards to calling in. So you all can help me, I'm not above being, uh, corrected, but just to make sure I have a proper understanding. So what, what's, uh, set before us is the call-in process, where you're calling in, uh, to let the, what's going on now, which was calling in the city manager or, uh, city clerk, uh, mayor, whatever the case may be, whenever you may cannot attend, uh, a meeting. Is that, that was pretty much my understanding at coming in. So this particular one, what's changing about that? What I saw was it, that will, it will have two flows now. Is that, is that correct of what's being proposed?
The ones that you saw?
Yes. So I saw one that said, uh, that went through city clerk or the city manager, and then below that, it was one that said, okay, if, if it's after, uh, twenty-four, I mean, less than twenty-four hours, or I think that was the date, my computer is, uh, giving an error as well.
I know.
But then it went down to the position. I'm not talking about a, any person, I'm talking about council, mayor seats, just in position, so let me make that clear. So the one underneath that said, you, um, if it was less than twenty-four hours, that you would have to then, uh, call, ma- call the, the, uh, mayor, and then, uh, that would be relate, city manager, city clerk, and then the decision would be made by, uh, whoever's sitting in that mayoral, mayoral position as to if someone can join. Is that telephonically and via Zoom? I know we're under the emergency order in what you just said. So I just want to make sure, is that's, that's what's being proposed?
Yes, sir. Um, the, um, the idea is that, again, twenty-four hour notice, um, and, uh, the, um, I think the thing that we would try to do, um, establish would be Zoom. Um, there's also additional, um, uh, discussion, um, um, in legal circles, and not going to step on the city attorney again, but that, um, the, uh, that request that, when all possible, that elected officials be able to be seen when they're voting. And that's why Zoom works so well, is because you can actually see the visual. Um, but, um, in those cases, um, for practical purposes, if it were less than twenty-four hours, if it were for, I assume for some reason, something that was unforeseen, um, um, I would, I would assume that the policy, in my mind, would still govern if we were able to accommodate it. But, um, clearly, if there's a vacation or work obligation or something like that, the idea would be, um, uh, twenty-four hours that would allow the clerk's office, of course, to set it up.
Right. Now, I, I understand that. So my, my question is this. So, based on that second flow, again, this is just positional, not if anybody, this is, because this is gonna apply to future councils as well, whoever sits in whatever seat. So according to that second flow, uh, a person could not necessarily, uh, come on telephonically unless the person sitting in the mayoral seat gives the nod. Is, is that what's, that, that second part is reading? That less than twenty-four hours, that second flow? I mean, I know it's not coming, I, I just want to make sure before, but I want to make sure exactly what I'm, uh, what we have before us.
Well, if I can, let me try to read-
I can pull it up.
That part. Um, "When possible, any member who desires to participate remotely shall notify the mayor, city manager, clerk at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting to allow setup of any necessary equipment or to accommodate remote participation. The member shall provide telephone number. Uh, the presiding officer must be physically present at the meeting, except in the case of states of emergency. A member has the same voting privileges. A member participating remotely must, at a minimum, be fully heard. When casting a vote, a member participating shall be called individually by the presiding officer. No written ballots may be taken when participating remotely, members participating remotely should have the right to receive all documents, um, distributed. In rare cases, that all members of the meeting are participating remotely because of requirements of state emergency, the media, media and other interested members should have access to listen." I'm not, um, I think I'm missing-
It's on the city council, it just popped up, city council remote attendance flow chart.
Okay. And you're talking about less than twenty-four hours?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I don't, I, I honestly don't have an issue with the general policy, things of that nature. Here, here is, if I had to disagree in one instance, this would be it, where it says the person that would be sitting in the mayoral seat would decide how and if the council member will attend. I, I personally, I, I have an issue with that, being that one person would be given that authority to say if someone could or could not, uh, attend, whether it's telephonically or whatever the case may. Now, if I'm reading it wrong, again, I'm not above correction, I'm not above it. I just want to make sure what, what I'm getting ready to vote on, because again, it impacts not only this council, those that are going forth. So I, I need to make sure that it does not, it make, am I mistaken in my assessment?
The, uh, the policy does not have that, that path, that additional path. The policy, as I see it, only reads twenty-four hours, um, notice ahead of schedule. Policy appears to be silent on that second flow, and I can't pull that up for some reason. The policy is silent on that second flow, and so if, um, it is the interest of council, um, we can, um, change that to say, when all possible, in, under twenty-four hours, if that meets the council's interest. But, um, and, oh.
I could have said, that's not pulling up on my system at the moment.
Yeah, and again, I'm, I've had, trust me when I say I have no issue with that. I just, I just want to make sure, again, if, if we're voting on it as a council, whatever the policy, that the, the, the decision-making body, the council makes, that's, that's it, that's what we follow. Not necessarily that it falls in any one person's hand, regardless of who's in the seat. Again, this is, this is not, this is, again, looking even down the road. Even if I'm here, none of you are here, different, whatever the case may be, just knowing, does it, that bottom, uh, flow, is that what we are also voting on to, to, uh, actually be included in the policy? I know you just said it's not included in there, so I just want to be sure it's not in there. So if we go forth, that is not in there. That, that one person is basically making, uh, that decision.
It is not in there, but this would be an appropriate time for council to give direction as to whether you want, that basically this part, which is four on your policy. "When possible, any member who desires to participate remotely shall notify the mayor at least twenty-four hours in advance." You could add in another section that if it is less than twenty-four hours in advance, we will make every effort to try to accommodate the policy.
Or, or council consensus, because the mayor got to chair the meetings, and it is very disruptive to do that when you have people trying to get Zoom thirty minutes before a meeting starts. If there's a real bona fide emergency, like the first part of the policy says, then when, when, it would only include those things typically, unless it's some family crisis, you know that before, hour before the meeting. So that is not fair to the person trying to chair it, that's not fair to the staff. So if there's an issue with that, you can add, as a failsafe, or council consensus.
Okay, we can do that.
But, um, just to, to not allow that to, to be a discretion under the twenty-four hour, within the twenty-four hour window. So, I mean, council, you have your pleasure to vote, however you choose to vote. We've clarified it, Councilmember Jones, I think you've asked the question extensively, good point. So council, you can, you can look at alternatives, you can look at as-is, or you can look at adding it where, either or, council consensus. Consensus, council, yeah. Councilmember Banks McGough, and then Councilmember Ingram, council, then we have to move on.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do agree with, um, Councilmember Jones, but by courtesy, I feel that council should notify, not just send a mayor, I mean, send an email to mayor, but just to the board as a whole, um, that they're unable to attend, just for courtesy. Um, my question is on five, where it says, um, in the middle of the paragraph, it said, "Once contact has been established, the remotely participating member shall identify himself and state the reason for participating remotely." And I have a kind of little concern with that as far as, I don't think that's everybody's public business, in a sense, as far as, if I'm on vacation or whatever it is, I'm doing illness, um, to me, it should just be us sending an email, letting you all know that we're, um, attending remotely, because at the same time, we're still participating.
Okay. Well, council, you have the option to vote, as-is, or with some amendments, if that doesn't work, I do think that, oh, Councilmember Ingram, I'll go give it, give it to you before I ask for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, you made a comment that kind of spoke to, um, council members trying to get Zoom information thirty minutes before the meeting. So I'll, I'll raise my hand to say, as somebody who's been denied access to council meetings last minute, um, typically, um, and Ms. Ericin probably pulled my emails, I ask hours in advance, and I do recall an instance where there was a decision made without this body to transition to, um, conference call without the use of Zoom. And because this body did not decide on that, I continued to request Zoom access because the body did not decide on some, a process in which we entered into. And I hold accountable staff to that, and the mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, because this body did not, did not make that decision. So the comment about getting access thirty minutes, that was a full day of trying to get access.
I wasn't necessarily talking about you.
Okay, I'm just, I'm making it clear of what has happened in the past. And so I agree with Councilmember Banks McGough, and whereas I'm, say, a bit plainer, it's not really anybody's business as to why we have to participate remotely. We are there. Um, I do have concern also about, which is why I didn't vote, because I already knew what it said, about one person being able to, to determine if somebody wants to be there or not. That is honestly how we got our closed session policy. So that, that's, that's what I, all I have to say.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, how does this policy align with other municipalities' policies? Because their staff requested sample policy from other municipalities, turning to policy council review discussion.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Um, what, 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 what are some of the examples, Madam Clerk, of other, how other municipalities do, do we have any other examples?
Oh, that's, that's how we came up with this policy. It's a combination of a couple of other municipalities.
And so Mayor, um, if I could, I think the things that, uh, we've heard are to-
Well, we, we, we're gonna, we're gonna clarify this, because this, this is how we get cloudy. So, uh, there were council norms. There were understandings about closed sessions and, and being able to, to participate telephonically. Zoom just came into play when, uh, the pandemic put us in a remote posture. But at the end of the day, um, prior to that, it was always a, a norm that you called into the meetings, and you gave notice so that staff could do it, because staff is here to support the council body, who's usually here. And if an extenuating circumstances requires you not to be here, then it's courteous to give notice to the people who are chairing the meeting, which is whoever's sitting in the mayor's seat, and the staff, because one staff member can't be pulled away from running this meeting and doing what they need to do to clerk this meeting with good, proper documentation at the last minute. It takes more coordination than that. So that's how we got here. This is a proposal, just to solidify this policy that was kind of a norm. It's as specific as it is, we can amend it, we can vote on it as-is, or we can make whatever modifications, or you can vote against it. But I think it needs to be some policy, and there should be some expectation for us to come to work, because we're elected to come to work. Staff has to come to work, we should have to come to work. And if this were any other job, you would have to give notice. If you don't have time off, PTO time or what have you, you would have to give some notice on extenuating circumstances. You had to do it at school. When you had to have an absentee note, you had to tell them whether it was, and they would deem it an approved absence or not approved absence. I don't feel like coming today shouldn't be approved to come to work. So, I mean, we can vote on it as we, as we, as we need to and make whatever modifications. But council, i- it's, it's time to probably put some structure to this for the staff. So, Councilmember Banks McGough?
Well, I, ju- just for clarity, just for clarity, um, no, I support the twenty-four hour notice, because we all work together as colleagues. If we were working anywhere else, we all should know who's not going to be able to attend. My, my, um, issue was, once we, once we get onto the Zoom, putting that information out there to the public saying, "Hey, I'm on Zoom because X, Y, Z." Because that's how I read it.
Yeah, I don't think that was a part of this requirement.
Yeah, that's what it said more to the public now, to us reaching out to council saying, "Hey, I'm, you know, a child sick or I have a illness," but not-
What are you saying, that it tells, that it has to tell the public that?
It is under page five, it's under section five.
Let me go back.
"Once contact has been established, the remotely participating member shall identify himself and state the reason for participating remotely."
Yeah, and the reason.
I, I do agree that, that should not be publicly stated.
Yeah, that's, but definitely we should, as a council, we should, the twenty-four hours, we should definitely communicate, not, I mean, just across the board.
All right. Well, that's fine. All right. So council, um-
And Mr. Mayor, I think I've heard the two parts, if you want me to re- okay?
Okay.
Um, so we will go back in under four, and we will leave in, uh, the twenty-four hours advanced noting of the meeting to allow setup. And we will put, um, if under, uh, twenty-four hours, it will be by consensus of the members present.
Okay.
Um, um, and the ability of staff, whatever, we'll figure something out, some language there. And we will strike, um, the, uh, "Once contact is established, remotely participating member shall identify himself or herself," period.
All right. So, Mayor Pro Tem, and then Councilmember Wright, and then we need to, need to vote, y'all.
So I have a question about, you know, consensus of council. So somebody calls in, you know, two hours before the meeting, or basically thirty minutes before, and says, "I'm not coming." That puts more strain on the, on the staff and council than any, because if you have to pay the vote, then they have to get it all set up. I mean, I just think that there needs to be, it's twenty-four hours, or you just call in, because calling in seems to be easier. Is that, is that correct on staff? Calling in takes less off the staff than Zoom. So if you do not call in twenty-four hours, and you want, you want, you gotta call up my, my end. I think you should have to call in, and I will tell y'all, sitting in these two seats, when you call on Zoom, it is ten times harder. I, I mean, yeah, so when you, you're looking at us, and we're trying to do the meeting, it disrupts a lot. So that, that's my opinion, is that if you don't give twenty-four hours notice for Zoom, then you want to come, you need to call. It's just a call, it's a check, it works, I'm not solving.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
So, clarity. So the twenty-four hour call, that's fine, you know, but I think if it's under twenty-four hours, you need to give courtesy to the chair of the board. So we're talking about, so one person or two people and a staff, um, but the, but the chair of the board, just a courtesy to say, and, and we don't need to let anybody get in your personal business of why you can't attend. But as the, uh, chair of the board or the city manager, I think it'll be easier, because all of us are grown, you know, and all of us have responsibilities. And so, but we have to trust the people that we work for and understand it's a profession, and we are professional, and we are elected officials, right? So I don't think that nobody's trying to set anybody up or make anybody look bad, but just for accountability and out of respect, that the thing will flow properly. bad, but just for accountability and out of respect, that the thing will flow properly. And I'm just thinking out of eyes of a military structure, or even a school structure, or any type of corporate structure. And so if we have to contact all of us under the 24-hour structure, if it's two, two hours or whatever, then it's, how hard it would be for who knows who is doing what, and, and, and what time will they be able to respond back? And then what would they respond back? Oh, so-and-so said they're going to make the meeting. Well, I don't, I don't agree. They should be here. Well, you might not know all the, the circumstances involving why they can't be here. So my thing is, I think it'd be simple if we just keep it with the, you know, the chair of the board, maybe the, you know, the mayor pro tem and the city manager, or, or whoever he, you know, assigns to that task. But for all of us to be involved at, at any given time to say, okay, they, they're not going to be, I don't understand that. I don't understand why that piece is, somebody help me to understand why, and how that, how that would work if that's the suggestion, city manager.
The suggestion about less than 24 hours?
Yeah, that everybody would have to be notified.
So what we can do is vote on it as, as is, and if it doesn't pass, then the fallback can be, because I agree with you, trying to gather consensus, who's counting and verifying the consensus?
Well, I, I, I think that I heard two different proposals. One was consensus, and the other was if less than 24 hours, the, the member could call in.
He always had the option to call. This was talking about a Zoom link, which is video.
Well, one of the things that, because we are now broadcasting your work sessions on GTV, we are also able, it's also a webinar link that goes out for Zoom. But the, the issue with Zoom, not only for the mayor to manage or presiding chair to manage, it's also for staff to be able to watch who's got their hands raised. So the webinar, which is online right now via Zoom, is, is just at a webinar. Someone can see it and hear it, and just as if they're watching on GTV, but it is not interactive, Jennifer, is that correct, where she is necessarily monitoring a council member's participation as a panelist typically. So, but it's, we-
Councilmember Jones, then we're kicking a vote now.
I just want to clarify. What I said, hopefully, all of that conversation wasn't about that, because it's taken it so far out of context. I didn't disagree with anything about that. My point was, for the, the timeframes, I get that. I get the staff. This, this was nothing about, my thing, my point was, what I did not necessarily agree with was under 24 hours, that how it is written, it says, one person will decide if you are able to call in or whatever the case may be. That's what I was pointing out. It wasn't the timeframes or anything like that.
Yeah, we, we got you.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I'm not knocking against any of that. I'm for the timeframes, accountability, all of that. So that was just a thing I just had in question. That's why I wanted clarity. Is that what, was I reading it correctly? So I just wanted to make that very clear. I'm not kicking against any of, any of that at all. I'm, I'm all for that.
We got you. We got you, council. All right, council. Those in favor of policy as presented? Show of hands, and then if not, we'll work toward amendment, if necessary. What's presented that we've talked about for an hour just now? All right. All right. So motion carries, sir. So you'll have that for action. Those voting against, those voting against? Show of hands.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. No, no, I do have a question. So you said it, you stated it as a certain piece, you stated that you did not agree with it.
I didn't say anything.
No, you did. You did. And I wish I could have it in front of me. You stated-
Which part did you tell me?
It was, it was, I think it was about one person being able to make the final decision. You said that you did not agree with that, but you just asked this body to make a vote as presented.
Councilmember Ingram, the vote has been taken. I don't recall what you're saying. We had a lot of dialogue about it. I think that it was talking about the difficulty of getting the consensus under 24 hours and who tracks it. So I think we've all litigated that enough, but right now, the majority said we move forward as presented. Next item. All right. Item 4.08. Councilman Dawkins, you had some updates on this?
I brought the issue up as a councilmember request, and it's got at least 12 changes in it. I doubt the council's really studied it. I think this is going to take probably 45 minutes to an hour. I hate these guys have been waiting for four hours and 16 minutes. But I, I, I want to thank the staff for what they've done. And I think because of all these changes, I'd, I'd recommend that we hold off till August. I didn't know this was coming up this month. First, I've seen, I've read it. It's stunning. I mean, my edits shown are well over half the page of red lines. So that's my consensus motion to wait August, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So the motion to table this to late August, and second by councilmember Ingram. Those in favor, table. Just tabling this too long. All right. Sorry, sorry, guys.
I, I started with three this morning. We just got, we just got to two.
You brought new shoes, sir.
Let me see.
Can, can, can you at least acknowledge the shoes?
Oh, I like them.
Your shoes look nice, sir.
All right, all right.
Well, maybe, maybe he's a part of the feather sign conversation, is that. All right, Mr. Newt.
Let me know where you bought them from. I want a pair of those.
Item 4.09. All right.
Which leaves us with the, the feather signs, which we've talked about extensively. Yeah, just like this last one, it's been several times where you've heard and seen things. This is one where you asked us to look at it again. Dave Steinmetz has been around during the time where this idea of temporary signage and how you deal with it has been looked at. Similarly, Attorney Harper has been involved in some of the issues that we've looked at over the years on this. So Dave Steinmetz, the assistant director, is going to make this presentation for you, and we hope you enjoy this last presentation of the evening. While he's pulling this up, just as a reminder, this is so you can decide if you want to move forward or not. So your first question, just like it would have been on the home occupation, is do you want to move forward or not? And if so, know that it has to go to the planning commission, and then it comes back to you. So you, by consensus in a work session, are just going to talk that idea out, knowing that it will eventually come back to you with details, full details, but you'll be seeing a lot of that right now. Thank you, Dr. Newton. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Uh, hold on a second, Mr. Steinman, uh, councilman here.
Help me with this, because this is an issue that the mayor and I have spoken on, so that's, that's why it even got here. Our number one concern that we hear is that we want to allow businesses to use the feather signs, period. Period. So whatever else we're going to go through, that's fine, but the concern-
That, that's an option at the end of the presentation.
So has something changed since we saw this the last time?
Not really. I mean, there's a little bit of information in there.
Yeah, we, we wanted it. We thought we had given the head nod for it, and staff said, it showed up as an administrative report, and staff said that, that he, I mean, the manager said he needed something formal from us. That's why it's back here.
But Mayor, I think the, the interest is, is like everything else, it depends on how far you want to go. The proposal, I think, that staff has is that if the interest that came, started this was new businesses or for events, there's a way to do that. The, the council in the past in the community worked a long time about the sign code. That was one of the big issues that, remember from the corridor committee about, and so one of the things that, again, having been here for, this Mr. Here has and Mr. Dawkins, everything from the pedestal signs to the, to the banners, to the flags, to the balloons, and it, I think the options that staff have are trying to make sure that if it's something that you want to allow, that you allow just that and maybe no more. But I think that's where Dave's presentation is at.
Yeah, the, the, what brought this here was, was the fact that, right now, we have something that says you can put it open, put it up only if you've been open for a certain amount of days. And we showed that other jurisdictions have the ability for businesses to put signs without it being, you know, 30 days or having something special or what have you. So I remember we talked about this extensively when we got the consensus for it. I, I hate to do, to do things over, but Mr. Steinman, you might have some new shoes too that you want to show off.
Well, I was, I was going to go into history a little bit, but I can skip that, going back to the-
Yeah, I think, I think we had already given a nod that we wanted to, to allow these businesses to be successful with these signs.
Well, the one thing is there are legal limitations that the, the attorney can advise you on, but the city cannot allow some temporary signs and prohibit other signs that are defined as temporary under our ordinances.
So what we can do, we can send it to planning commission with the changes that it sounds like that you're interested in, and they would come back with the recommendation that council could accept or override at that time when it comes to you for formal adoption.
Is that normal course for, if we would have moved it forward when we thought we moved it forward?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It would still need to go to planning commission for a text amendment.
Okay, yes. All right.
We certainly can do that, just, just as a reminder, it was in October of last year that you-
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Commissioned by councilmember Wright, second by councilmember Here. Those in favor, show of hands.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Motion to adjourn, y'all.